Public Works and Solid Waste Ordinance, and of course, Mr. Ken Belay. You're welcome.
Ken, come on up.
Yeah.
I would just like to state, I guess we all have to get re-acclimated to be back in person. I think we had it down to a science doing the remote where we were all able to see each other. Now, it's a little different. We actually melded it. This is a hybrid. I will let you know that we're one of the first communities to come back to have a live council meeting or a select meeting. Most are still doing it remotely. And also, some are doing it where they allow the public to call in, and we, of course, are allowing the public to come within the governor's executive order. So I'm excited about that. But I will ask for your indulgence. We had to meld together, being able to have council persons remotely and directors remotely. I wanted directors to be in their office, you'd be able to view them, but if we had had them come, we would have had no seats for the public. So we're trying to do a, of the best of both worlds. But as a result of that, the pictures of those, once the presentation is gone, we should be able to see the directors and the council persons, Mr. Kiner and Donna Susak, up on the screens and in front of you. They can't see us, but they can hear us. So we'll be able to see and hear directors and the other council people, hopefully. We've worked at this for five or six days to make sure we could meld the two technologies. As you know, we went HD for YouTube, and we have all new cameras and new monitors. I think this is very nice. Members of the public, I think it's nice now that we just don't have that one indicated screen that would block the council and be difficult to see, so now they can see the two monitors. So with that, we've tested this. Donald is out on a medical leave, but he pre-recorded his presentation on the municipal solid waste revision, and Ken was kind enough to come in and be here to try to field any questions because Donald is not available even by monitor. So with that, Paul, and I thank IT, and if you can see the newly renovated council chambers to get us into the 2020s, I thank Building and Grounds. We did it all within their existing budget. They did it all in-house. Deb McCarthy helped with the aesthetics and the colors. We did all new, you know, tiles acoustically. It's HD and with cameras, so I, I think it's a fitting reopening for us to come back after COVID to this very, I think, gracious council chamber, which is what I think the council deserves and what our residents deserve, a place that has dignity and decorum to conduct town government business. So now, unless this is a total failure, we will segue, Paul, into the presentation by Mr. Nunes.
You're going to knock on wood right there. Go ahead, Paul, if you want to run.
I'm the Director of Public Works for the Town of Enfield. Tonight, we'll be talking about the municipal solid waste ordinance revision. The public hearing is scheduled for Monday, October 5th, and this presentation is a precursor for that to help you understand what are some possible changes in the municipal solid waste ordinance. Tonight, we talk about the goal of municipal solid waste ordinance, how we arrived here, the future of MSW in Connecticut, our own MSW and recycling data, the difference between a town ordinance and a policy, revisions to the current ordinance, and implementation. We want to do four things primarily. We like to update, implement, reduce, and provide flexibility. We want to update our solid waste ordinance to improve efficiency, safety, remove ambiguity, and introduce future cost savings. Want to implement quality and quantity standards. We want to reduce the municipal solid waste tonnage by diverting more into the recycling program and limiting residential capacity. And lastly, we want to provide flexibility so we can account for facility changes, creating adjustable policy to meet changing needs in the current MSW climate. So how we arrived here? We have had numerous meetings with the Town Council DPW Subcommittee over the last 18 months. We've had multiple work sessions with the Office of the Town Attorney. We've had reviews of the ordinance by DPW staff, including frontline employees, crew leaders, division managers, and administrative staff. We also had attendance at several conferences from Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, Materials Innovation and Recycling Authority, and the State of Connecticut to understand trends and the new state of municipal solid waste in Connecticut. So the future of municipal solid waste in Connecticut is not very good right now. In July 2020, Governor Lamont rejected a proposal to spend more than $330 million to upgrade MIRA. Governor Lamont quotes, and I state, "I cannot support sending hundreds of millions of taxpayer or electric ratepayer dollars to MIRA to attempt to keep a failing decades-old facility running right here in Hartford where it impacts our vulnerable residents." A permanent trash export operation is also a non-starter. It's time for new ideas. So short-term options include renovating the Hartford Plant, which, again, Governor Lamont does not wish to do, or we may have to start shipping the trash out of state. If the governor decided to renovate MIRA, it could produce tipping fees up to $145 per ton. The State of Connecticut currently has no significant in-state waste-to-energy capacity available. There are also no municipal solid waste landfills in the state that are operational. The New York and Southern New England regions similarly have no available capacity. If exporting municipal solid waste is the only option, the market will be governed by transportation costs in addition to tipping fees. In 2016, we were at $61.72 per ton for disposal, and we took in approximately 13,600 tons, and which amounted to 800, approximately $840,000. In FY '20, that rate jumped to $73 per ton, and we've expended just over $1 million in costs just for disposal of municipal solid waste. In 2021, our contract with USA Waste is $80.50. In fiscal year '22, it is $81.50, and in fiscal year '23, it'll jump to $83. From the line graph here, we see that municipal solid waste tonnage is increasing at approximately 0.47% per year. Our recycling data is very interesting because in fiscal year 2016 and 2017, we were actually getting paid for recycling. We earn $87,000 in fiscal year '16, and in fiscal year 2017, we earned $84,000. Then the market fell out for that, then we went to paying to get rid of recycling. And we're right now, we are currently, we started at $10 in FY '18, and now we're at $10.78 for FY '21. Our goal, again, part of the reduction, is to produce more recycling, so we're only paying $10.78 instead of the $80.50, which we will be paying now. With the MSW tonnage increasing, our recycling tonnage has steadily decreased over the years. And again, it is the goal of this is to increase this recycling tonnage and divert more into recycling and taking away more from MSW. At our transfer station, the last five fiscal years, we brought in almost 10,000 tons of trash for a cost of approximately $1.2 million over that five years for bulky waste and other materials that are brought up there. If the projection goes as planned, and we don't do anything about working towards our goal of solving or reducing and diverting more into recycling, we are in current, we are currently in FY 2020, and we were, or last year, we spent just over $1 million. If the projections hold true, in 28, in eight years, we're going to be spending about $1.5 million just for municipal solid waste. That's all that's for. So we're going to, so this part will be a, will be continuing to add cost and add to the budget from this. An ordinance is the official codified law of the town and adopted by the Town Council, and only the Town Council can amend or repeal the ordinance. A policy is the procedure for implementing the ordinances. An example of a policy could be including, could be setting the cost of replacement tipper barrel, our fall leaf pickup dates and hours of operation. The multiple meetings that we had, DPW had with the Town Attorney wanted to make certain that the ordinance clearly reflects ordinance items and policies such as those, what the cost of a tipper barrel is when we pick it up, was removed from that, and that will be discussed at our next DPW Subcommittee meeting, is those other policy items which would be available and may, may hold then. We now like to talk about the revisions to the current ordinance. One of the main goals was to make, to modernize our current definitions and to add things and remove things that did not seem appropriate anymore. We removed, we removed the definition from authority in the revised ordinance. We expanded on our bulky waste definition to make sure that there was no ambiguity left in what exactly bulky waste means. We added collector. Now, this means any person or firm that comes and picks up handyman services, basement cleanings, things like that. We added a whole section about collectors here. We removed the commercial solid waste definition from the ordinance. We added a common gathering venue, such as we are mandating people that have gatherings now outside, that we have to have not only trash, but also recycling bins outside as well. Condominium unit, we defined what a condominium unit was. We have expanded our contractual standards for solid waste deliveries definition. We have expanded upon our curbside placement, more importantly, that the barrel must be oriented so that there's no obstruction within three feet in any direction. We've added what a customer is. We have added what DEEP means, which now, before it was DEP, now it is DEEP for Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. We removed the directed solid waste facility, and we also expanded upon exactly what a disposal charge means. We add a definition of a fine, monetary fine or penalty. We've expanded upon our, what a generator means. We have cleared up with hazardous waste definition. We added the definition of materials recycling facility. We have added a description of multifamily homes. We removed the municipal service agreement. We defined, we added municipal solid waste definition. We clarified the, what a plastic bag means. We defined what a policy means. Modified the definition of recyclable. We removed the definition of refuse collector. We also modified what it means, what residential waste means. We expanded upon solid waste. We added what a solid waste facility is, and we expanded on what a tipper barrel is. We added the definition of town. We've also added the definition of what our town's transfer station is. We modified the written warning definition, and we added what a yard waste means. More notable changes in the revisions to the current ordinance include incorporating flexible policy references to address disposal facility contract changes. There will be one tipper barrel for trash will be collected per week at no charge. A maximum of up to three additional gray tipper barrels per residence will be available for an annual fee to be established by the director. We're going to limit the maximum size of all tipper barrels to be 96-gallon. There will be no extra bags or items collected outside of tipper barrels after holidays, and tires are no longer accepted. Other changes include tipper barrels must not have any obstructions within three feet in any direction. The Director of Public Works may direct placement of tippers for safety or efficiency. The contents of all tipper barrels must be completely contained inside the barrel with the lid securely closed. Tipper barrels not secured will not be collected. Regarding yard waste, up to two brown tipper barrels will be collected per week per residence at no charge. A maximum of up to two additional brown tipper barrels per residence will be available for an annual fee to be established by the director. Yard waste in barrels will have nothing greater than three inches in width and nothing longer than three feet. During our spring collection, the timeframe determined by the Department of Public Works, there could be three brown tippers will be collected per week per residence without additional annual tag required. The Director of Public Works will establish a leaf waste collection schedule. During the scheduled leaf collection, up to 40 biodegradable leaf bags, unlimited weekly brown tipper barrels will be accepted. And now, implementation of this. Well, the first steps would be to revise the ordinance and then accept the ordinance. The next would be educating, which would take approximately four weeks of increased inspection of tipper contents, tagging and reporting results and placement issues. The next step would be implementing the primary tag system on gray tippers, and that'll take about six to eight weeks, selling additional tipper tags to residents, and again, more education, an additional four weeks or so for that to increase inspection of tipper contents, tagging, and reporting results. Questions about the ordinance will be by written testimony only and may be submitted by stating your name and address to phcomments@enfield.org by 5:00 PM on Friday, September 30th, 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Ken, I don't know if you have anything you want to add before we open up the...
No, I just know there was a lot of time put into this. I mean, over a long period of time, I've been involved since, you know, near the end of December, and it's something that we have to get control on. It's for, it's for, you know, our kids, grandkids, and everybody else to try to control this and the cost. We're kind of, our hands are tied on cost, and with our latest contract that we just got, I thought the contractor was very fair with the price because a lot of other communities are paying a lot more to get rid of it.
Thank you, sir. So before we open up the questions, Councillor Bosco, Councillor Mangini, I'll let you go first since you're in a subcommittee, and we'll go to Deputy Mayor Susak. Go ahead real quick.
Yes, I, thank you. Well, this thing's loud, and I'm loud. Let me stand back. Is this better?
It's all right to be, because people on TV, I mean, folks, so...
Yeah, maybe. Yeah. Yeah, so this started out, we've been working on this for probably over a year in committee. We got countless hours and meetings. The staff has been running ragged trying to get this taken care of. And just for the people, I know when I seen it advertised, people were not understanding correctly. More or less, everything stays, stayed the same. It's more of, excuse me, house cleaning, keeping, and stuff like that. The big difference is, is the amount of tipper barrels you're going to get. And for a little bit of history, you know, when, when we started all this, one of the reasons why I brought this up to the committee is every year, I hear people saying that we need to go out for privatization because that's how we're going to save money. We need to stop, stop being in the trash business and put private contractors in. So I had staff check and see what the municipal, municipals, towns are paying for private contracting for the solid, the amount of trash and for the labor. Well, it ends up that it's slightly more for us to do it ourself, but through the years with negotiations with the DPW and, and all the different employees, unions, we got everyone cross-trained. So when we had this storm, it was nice because we could take people from other departments and make them work in plowing and all that. So in the end, it is actually cheaper for us. So we don't have to pay for subcontractors of work, and we do have a problem. So that's where it started, but that's when we found out we were paying a lot more for waste. Well, why? Because when you go with a private contractor, you get one tipper barrel. If you want more tipper barrels, you have to pay. So this is more or less a hybrid of private, public, to get the biggest bang for the, the town. So in our committee, we figured what is, that's how we based it. Now, it's up to 11 of us to decide if what the amount of tipper barrels and stuff are correct, but this is modeled more after a private privatization of our trash by using our town employees, and this is how we're going to keep the price down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mangini, you have anything like that?
Thank you. I was one of the members of the Subcommittee. Thank you, Councilwoman Bosco, and also town staff, and Deputy Mayor Susak was on the committee as well. The group worked very hard to come forward with some recommendations, but there's just one area that I want clarification on still. You know, there are parts of our town, Hazardville specifically, where in the fall especially, we have a real issue with leaves. Now, with the one brown tipper barrel, that's not going to do it, but there's no allocation, or maybe I'm misunderstanding, for people to use brown paper bags. So how are we going to address the people of Hazardville specifically with all the inundation of the leaves?
So I don't want to, isn't it the last slide?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, Joey, if you want to answer, or Ken, it's...
Yeah, as far as I understood was during the fall, we're going to pick up whatever.
So if you go to the last slide, it says revisions, notable changes during, during leaf collection in the fall, 40 biodegradable leaf bags and unlimited weekly brown tipper barrels. So it sounds like the policy isn't changing from normal.
Okay, so is there a time limit? In other words, is going to be a beginning time period for the residents to do this?
Yeah, so Chris, I know we, last year, we were able to kind of have, I know Donald's out, but have like presentations, so we made a, I think, I'm sure you'll do your community updates that, right?
He'll let the people know so that, yeah, it'll be, that will be unchanged. There'll be a timeframe for the neighborhoods. People will be alerted to it prior, and we communicate it and put it out there so that they're aware.
I would appreciate that. I just don't want to see people be taken by surprise that, oh, well, you know, we thought this was going to continue another week, and it stopped, as long as we can communicate effectively with the residents. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So, I'll enjoy, once, Deputy Mayor Susak, anything before we, I mean, you were on the committee as well?
You know, I think that, you know, I want to, you know, reiterate what Joey said because we've been at this, I think, Joey, almost two years. I, you know, we need, most private don't even pick up yard waste. So, I mean, we, we pick up everything, and I know for me, you know, living in the Hazardville section, it is a big deal, the leaf pickup, but I think if there's storms or things like that, we'll do what we normally do, and we, you know, accommodate for the people, but we can't have an ordinance that accommodates for worst-case scenario. And basically, right now, our ordinance says that we have, we're limited to 40 bags. So I honestly wanted to go to all barrels. I feel like, you know, we saved a lot of money in Workman's Comp when we went to the tipper barrels. And one of the, you know, the most dangerous thing we have out there is our employees out there picking up bags of stuff. And, you know, for me, I, you know, this is a, this is a, listening to our staff, the, you know, where they talk about going to homes that have 10 and 11 barrels, and understanding that the cost is being driven is not, you know, the cost of our employees, it's the cost of getting rid of the waste that we pick up. So I think it's been a lot of work, and I'm really, I'm glad to see it come this far. Thank you.
Thank you. You all set, or you?
No, and just to go off is, we do have some businesses in town that are putting out 10, 12, 13, and we have, we have some residents that are doing that too, and that's going to take care of this so we can bring down the tonnage. But the most important thing is we did not take away the trash, especially for the people down in Thompsonville where they can't get a dumpster. So they'll be able to just purchase extra barrels if they need them and, you know, be able to take care of because that's the biggest problem. They need to be able to get rid of the waste. The, the other thing is, is we can always do a lot of these different little changes in policy because a lot of it would be policy. The ordinance takes care of all the big stuff, and if it comes down, we just do it in policy. If we're going to pick up 41 bags, we could change that in policy, I would say, instead of doing the ordinance again, and that's why we did this like this. So it could be fluid from now on. We have descriptions and, and everything is all laid out. So I, I think this will work really well, and, you know, it's just time to do it.
Thank you, sir. So we'll open up the questions. I'll start from the phone. Councillor Kiner, do you have any questions? No, okay. So anyone from, all set? Councillor Anger, then Councillor, then Councillor, Councillor Anger, then Councillor Sacala.
I was just curious, what happened to the industry? Because at one point, all the recycling for the Town of Enfield was generating revenue, and then all of a sudden, it flipped from one year to the next where now it costs us.
A lot of it has to do with stuff being remanufactured with China and stuff, and the market is flooded with recyclables now, especially, you know, a lot of cardboard and paper products with the Amazons and everything. I know I spoke to another community, and they're paying a whole lot more to get recyclables, get rid of them than us, but there's not, it's just that the market, the market is kind of dried up. So that's the main reason why the cost has gone up. We're saving, you know, almost $70 a ton to have somebody go, something go into recyclables instead of into the trash with the tipping fees.
Councillor Sacala.
I had one other question. I noticed in the presentation that residents will be limited to one gray tipper barrel because of the excess that Joey mentioned, some have 10. Why couldn't we make it two? You can have two brown, have two gray. Because there's large families that might generate in cookouts and holidays and all that. I think two sounds reasonable.
Well, I mean, I don't want to answer, but I think Joey made, basically, they were trying to mimic what the private sector did. I mean, very, I mean, that's basically, I don't want to speak for you, but that's what I got out of it.
Yeah, but the thing is, during holidays, you'll have that second tipper barrel. So, you know, the high trash flows, they didn't, they didn't put it up there, but the high trash flows, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, you know, all the big holidays were Christmas, Thanksgiving, you'll be able to put your second tipper barrel out.
Okay. I didn't hear that anywhere.
No, that was not there, and that's something that you guys have the ability to amend or whatever, because, you know, during some of those holidays, there isn't, you know, an issue. A 96-gallon trash can is quite large compared to a lot of communities are getting 32s, 48s and things. You know, the average resident, a 96-gallon barrel is more than efficient, but there is holidays, I just had a four, four-year-old birthday party on Saturday, so I have a lot of trash this week myself, so I understand that concern. We're just trying to put, you know, just trying to get a control of it, you know, some, put some type of limit on it.
Okay, so also large families too that might have more trash.
Yes. Councillor Sacala.
Thanks. So I guess what I want to hammer home and my takeaways are, it's really about education for the residents. Like, this will never work unless we educate the residents on why we're doing what we're doing, when we're doing it, and how we're doing it. So, like you said, the average resident, I don't think understands that it's 80-something dollars next year per ton for waste, and it's going to be under 11 for recycling. I don't think many people understand that. And so if we can educate them on the amount of money that this town could save, and hopefully it trickles down, then I think that's going to help them be able to swallow any sort of change in ordinance that is going to reduce the amount of tipper barrels they're going to be allowed to have for free. So I don't know how else to do it, but the stickies are fine, but we need to get press out, you need to put this on Facebook. This needs to be flooded because people need to understand why, why we're doing what we're doing. That's my first comment, because I, my takeaway from this whole thing is that you need to recycle more and waste less, but that's my takeaway. I guess, so my next, I guess my question is, was there any talk about more than one recycling bin and giving residents more than one of those for free if we're taking down, if we're taking away the ability to have more gray barrels? Is that discussed?
I'm sorry. There is a lot of residents that have more than one recycling barrel. We try to educate the public about breaking down the cardboard and everything, because the more recyclable and recycled barrels we have out there is the more tips, but we are more than willing to give more recyclable barrels. And as you talk about education, it's a big thing that we're going to have to push hard because when the recycling program started many years ago, there was a big push on education, went through to schools with the kids, and the kids, you know, helped the parents, you know, with the recycle, and so it's something that definitely has to happen, and this will, this will be a good result. And as you can see, the recycling numbers have dropped down over the last few years. And as you can see, the recycling numbers have dropped down over the last few years, and I think some more education through all the avenues would be a great thing.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Councillor Schrader and Councillor Riley.
One of the questions I have is, I understand about the one gray barrel, we're trying to mimic the private sector, but I want to be clear, if a resident wants the second barrel, they pay a fee for that second barrel just for the barrel itself, correct?
Yes, there would be an annual fee for a second barrel, up to four barrels, that will be established by the Director of Public Works.
Okay.
But it's not telling anybody that they can't have a second, you know?
But that, that's my question. The, the authority to set that fee for the second barrel is going to be exclusively for the director?
Yes, the way the policy is written, yes, because the, the cost of trash, if it goes up a lot, the fee for a second barrel will probably, you know, go up in time, but, or a third barrel or fourth. But the way the policy is written is for that to have the flexibility so we don't have to come back to counsel, you know, for full counsel for an ordinance, but...
And it's never likely the fee's going to go down, right? But if it did?
No, I'm afraid not. Back in February, we went down to the state Capitol, and they were talking about $140 tipper, or $140 fee per ton, and they were talking about forcing out the communities, and people got involved, and that, that went away, because, you know, that would have, you know, doubled our tip and fee at the time, so...
So, when he sets this fee, is he regulated by any constraints that he can only raise it enough to keep pace, or is it unlimited? Is there anything in the ordinance that, that addresses that?
There is nothing at this time.
It will be regulated by the public outcry to you if it goes too high.
Councillor Riley, thank you.
Okay, so, my question is, if it is an annual fee for your extra gray barrel, if you already have two, are you grandfathered in, or do you have to pay that annual fee? And what if you wanted the one extra barrel for just the holiday situation? Do you still have to pay the annual fee if you never use it except for Christmas? I mean, I guess that's one of my big questions. And then, the other question is, if we want to push recycling more, are we going to expand our recyclable list to include more items that we can recycle?
All right.
You can say, I can get back to you. It's okay, I'm covering you.
I was so focused on the second question.
You can get back to you now, don't worry, don't worry. Fair question.
You can say Donald will get back to you when he returns.
Yes, me, get my foot out of my mouth.
So, that's a follow-up question, we'll get back to you. So, I, I know we got to...
Good questions, so Donald will follow.
I think we got to move on, huh? I've got one final question, we got to get to the chief. Sorry, we're going to have to move on. Two quick question, I think, to Charlotte's point, you know, if you go to, I think it's going to be hard to regulate. Someone who says, I'm just having a second barrel, I'm only going to use it once a year. I'm, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't know how we regulate that through our folks in the DPW. So, if you're going to have to do it that way, you charge, and then, you know, you, you, then you put out more trash during the week, you know, and, and I'm, I think for me, I would, I'm okay with that, as long as we give, if we're willing to give that second blue barrel free. So, a trade-off, like, so you get the second blue barrel free, but you got to pay if you want the second gray barrel. That's, I'm just, that's my recommendation when we get there. And then, I think the Gina's point and Charlotte's point, why can't we do, and I, we talked about this probably, I don't know, last year before COVID and everything, but why can't we do one of those kind of, you know, you have the test tube, and we challenge the community to get to a certain savings? And I don't know, again, so we actually put it out there, and to your point, if we make, that's the other thing in the presentation, I think we have to talk through, is that if we reduce, I would just, whatever, say we reduce it a ton, we save X. I think that's what we need to show the public, so listen, if you do these things, you're willing to accept, which again, we all, we all want a clean environment here, and so, by the way, here's the savings. So, there's a tangible return on the investment, so to speak, for the resident, and we can track it right here at the town hall, we can do it, I mean, we don't have to spend a lot of money on it. Just look, here's what, our goal is, we have a set, the committee sets a goal and says we want to, whatever, reduce it by a third, quarter, whatever it may be, something that attainable, and we start there. And it starts through the schools, through a nice little, whatever you want to do, you know, and so, we can get to a goal, and it's in the entire community, and people see the actual savings going from paying $80 a ton to $10 a ton. That's pretty real money. And I agree with you, yeah, I've been saying it since the 90s, as you well know, man, this is going to get to a point when, I don't know how we're going to be able to afford, you know, our, our recycling and our, you know, refuge. It's going to get to a point where it's just, they're not going to have, they don't have any solutions, and I agree. It's time to start thinking differently. Yeah, I agree. So, I just, I think that's my suggestions as we look through the ordinance. Yeah, I think you guys did a really nice job, but then let's challenge people, say, look, we want to save X this year. Let's put it out there. What do we want to save? And that's through the committee and the council. This is my suggestion.
Mayor Mike, I just like to add something about the leaf season. We're still planning on running the leaf season as we've done in the previous years, you know, so we're not going to be limiting barrels, brown barrels, they won't, nobody have to pay an extra fee for brown barrels. And I know through the subcommittee, Councillor Bosco brought in for spring cleanup, we're going to send a, set a spring cleanup, so, you know, residents are able to get their yards cleaned up, you know, whether it's a three or four-week period. So, that's, that's all out there.
You got to be quick, so we got to move on.
Yeah, real quick. You'll be able to get whatever recycling barrels you need. After you hit the three, they'll come and make sure you're recycling correctly, and then we'll be all no charge. For the, paying for the barrel, you're going to get a sticker to put on your second barrel. So, during holidays, if you already have that tipper barrel, you'll be able to put your tipper barrel out, and when, if you need that second barrel, there'll be a sticker so they know that that barrel should be picked up. And Carl, policy, we write the policy, and we'll, we, we set the fee. So, Director sets it, we set the fee. So, if, if that, the Director can come and say to us, hey, look at that fee should be $500 for that barrel, and we could say, no, it's 50. I mean, that, that's how it's going to work. We set policy, and this is all, the rest of it's all going to be done in policy. So, I mean, I think that answers it, and that's why I wanted to make sure we had this little discussion before the public hearing, so now people could see it and go ask their questions.
I think it's a larger discussion on recycling and the future that, I mean, you saw the chart where you're looking at 1.8 million dollars within a few years. I think we can't sustain that in our budget. There's no way we can. I mean, it's, it's just not sustainable. So, again, anything closing? I don't want to, I want to make sure, appreciate you showing up here tonight, and I keep, you know, and we're doing all the hard work with the DPW folks. Anything in closing, sir?
I'll just, I'll thank you for your time, and, you know, let's move forward.
Appreciate it, Ken. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. Sorry, we were already behind, and we're going to move right over to...
I'll also state, this was...